Well, I have six o'clock, so I'd like to call the Rochester City Council meeting for January 26th to order. We are on tape, so let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go out of order here a little bit tonight because we have some folks who have some other meetings they need to step out to pretty quickly. Casey Foles, would you like to give your report on communications?
I appreciate you guys opening me up, but I'm one of three meetings I have tonight, so I'm trying to juggle everyone's.
No problem.
Did everybody get the annual report from the plan commission? For those of you who haven't been involved every year, the office we put together this annual report just kind of tells all of the legislative bodies who are involved. These are all the permits that we issued. This is what's been going on as far as the permitting side. It's also kind of an economic indicator. A lot of times when the economy is slower, you'll see a lot of remodels, a lot of maybe additions, but more remodels, that type of thing. When the economy is really booming, you'll see a lot of new houses. So you kind of fit it in between. Last year, we did 537 permits. This year, we did 557. You can kind of read through there the different building permits, electrical permits. All of the electrical licenses and plumbing licenses are from the city. No one else does those. So the numbers there, you can see are from the city. On the back, you can see the actual Rochester township as well as the city of Rochester. 226 of the permits came from the city. Of course, that built homes, one manufactured, four garages, and you can kind of go down. The other category, it would be your decks, privacy fences, you know, things that would take us 10 pages, the list. So they're just under other. The center section, the total splits, you really won't see those inside the city a whole lot because that's when you take a legal description, you separate it from one into two. You don't have a lot of call for that inside the city. But then the BZA petitions, you can see where city of Rochester had 10. They had six special exceptions, which tend to be more of your business-related special exceptions is what those are. We took in a total of $32,214.43. Of that, $380 was from electrical licenses. $80 was from plumbing licenses. $5,058.50, that's county building permits, and the city building permits, we've collected $13,030.44. That would be the total fees we collected. Any questions?
Anything at all for Casey? Thank you very much.
That was great, thank you.
You're gonna get a job on your next meeting. The other person we had that has another commitment is Tom Butler, chief Butler, if you want to give your report.
Good evening. For the month of December, structure fires, two in the city, one in Rochester township. Tiffany fires, two Rochester township. Calls for smoke, two in the city. Open burning, one in the city. Auto fire alarms, one in the city. Accidents, one in the city. Four Rochester township, two Richland township. Gas leaks, two in the city. CO checks, one in the city. Medical assists, 15 in the city, three in Rochester township. Lift assists, two in the city. Calls for service, one in the city, one in Rochester township. Canceled calls, one in the city. We had a total of 42 runs, one drill, which was our CPR annual recertification. And for 2015, we had a total of 630 runs. Penning your questions, that concludes my report.
Tom, I know some folks have heard this story, but I'm not sure everybody on the council has. Could you relay the story about David Lawson here a couple of weeks ago?
Sure. On January 19th, at 1:00 in the morning, we had a call, a medical call Dave responded to. It was a quick turnaround call. On the way back to his residence on Monticello Road, Dave struck a deer on Forest Street, which kind of slowed his delay getting home. Once the deer and his car was back in service, as he ventured out to Monticello Road, he noticed heavy smoke pouring out of the first residence on the left-hand side of the road. He called dispatch, immediately reported the possible structure fire, awoke the residents, and literally because of his keen awareness and kind of orientated where he was and observing, he saved four lives that night. Pure luck that the medical call was nothing, and he had the gumption to get out of bed, as our volunteers do. The poor deer sacrificed his life. We'll call it intervention. And so he was at the right place at the right time. Had he been earlier, he may not have saw the smoke. Had he been later, it would have been too late. The attic was almost fully involved, and it already vented when I arrived with the second piece of apparatus. So we had a five-inch hose. They already had an interior tack. Once we pulled the ceiling, it was electrical in nature probably, but the whole attic space, really bad charge. There was no smoke. They didn't have working smoke detectors. But because they had a beadboard ceiling and then a suspended ceiling below that, it was pretty tight. It said all the fire and smoke was above. It rises, it doesn't come down. So there was no smoke in the living quarters. And I thought the fire had set, and they reported when they first entered that there was no smoke in the living area, but there was active fire above their heads. So had that burned just a little bit longer, it would have just collapsed in on them, and the outcome might not have been as pleasant as it was this time. So we got a very good, fortunate turnout, I guess the way to put it. And like I said, then Channel 57 did come down. If you Google that, they did a nice little snippet. And just as they were reporting, the woman actually had walked in and wanted a copy of the fire report. It's the first time her and Dave had met, really face-to-face. They kind of met that night of the fire, naturally, but everything kind of sunk in, and it was a pretty emotional to stand there and witness that first thank you that she had for him. Very nice. So I said it wasn't just, you know, a couple of months ago, we had another one. I'm a fireman, was at the wrong place at the wrong time, and did the right thing by pulling the woman out of the car just before it burst into flames after that head-on collision down around Zionville. So the two of our guys have been in the right places and have made a positive impact on people's lives.
And if I could add an addendum to that, both of these gentlemen were volunteer firemen. They've received similar training, if not exact training, as our regular firemen. And they've been involved for a while with our program, one of them several years. This training came in handy in these two instances, so good work.
Thank you.
I'll pass that along to the gentleman. Okay, now we're gonna back up a little bit and approve the minutes from, or talk about the minutes from the common council of regular meeting of December of the 22nd and a special session on January the 7th. You've all received copies and read it. Do I have a motion to approve? Or correct, or whatever?
I think a motion we approved. The minutes has submitted.
Second by Marty. Those in favor, show up hands. Okay, and the Board of Public Work and Safety, that's for information-only shadow.
Correct. You did not need to.
All right, now back on track with our committee reports. Let's see, chief shots?
Good evening. Quite a few reports for you. We'll start with the month of December last year. We had a total of 14 accidents, three of those are personal injury. 86 total warnings, 47 total offenses. With 14 being traffic, 27 being criminal. Our officers drew 44 case reports. We had 566 calls for service, 34 lockouts, 13 towed vehicles, and 12 people incarcerated. And then you have the list of crimes that they're incarcerated for for the month of December. And then I also compiled a list of all the crimes, all the individuals who were alive for the year 2015. And then I did the totals for 2015. We had 228 total accidents, 1,252 total warnings, 486 traffic offenses, 409 criminal offenses, 566 total case reports, 7,959 calls for service, 469 lockouts, 103 towed vehicles, and 203 people incarcerated. Any questions about those numbers or reports?
Questions for the chief?
And then about the only other news right now going on, we are accepting applications for the final position for our last enrollment until we get back up to full staff. Applications are due back February 15th. We'll see how many get turned in, see if we accept that or extend the date. I know we had to extend the date last time. And then Caleb Russell, he's our newest hire. He started the first full week in January. He's in his third week of field training right now. So it's gonna be a slow process for him. He doesn't have really any law enforcement experience. He was prior military, a family man, has three kids, lives in the Grass Creek area. I think he's gonna be a good addition to the department. But like I said, it's gonna be a slow process for him. He's got the roads, businesses, addresses, things like that, done pretty good. Now it's just starting to apply things in multitask, and that's why we can run into some problems at times. So other than that, that's about it going on right now. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, chief. Very complete. Okay, reports of committees. Terry Plan Commission, Matt Mark?
We were scheduled to meet Monday, but it was canceled due to no new business.
The Fedco meeting, I did attend the Fedco meeting. Lots of, some new members that were introduced. And Jason Group brought up the fact that he would like to start a marketing group, a committee, made up of Fedco members who are interested in putting a marketing strategy together as part of the Fedco organization of marketing Rochester. So Amy Rowe and I jumped on that, volunteered to be part of that. And there's gonna be a couple of other people involved. Jason's pulling that together. Park Board, we've got a new president for the park board. It's Kim Landis. And they had some discussions about a new slide that's gonna be put in one of the parks. And that was about it. We had a pretty short meeting where the officers were just put into place. Just a kickoff meeting. I will let you know that I still have, you might have remembered this from the campaign, but I still have designs of getting a high school student involved with the park board. We've had some discussions with Jenna Vance and Mr. Stasiak over there. It would not be a voting position. It would be an auxiliary position, an advisory type of position. It's somebody who, they can run election over at the school and get a couple of candidates and have the students vote on them, and then I will appoint them for this advisory position. They were very excited about it at the school. They think it's not only a great way to get our younger folks engaged in local politics, but who better knows what's going on in some of these parks than the younger folks? So we're gonna be pursuing that. That, that's all for that. How about the redevelopment commission, Terry?
Kind of a lot of stuff going on. Some of it's just getting our bearings with a new chamber director and a new downtown partnership group coming together. So on February 4th, the downtown partnership group and the redevelopment commission will be meeting with the consultant that was hired to look at a downtown plan. I went to Indianapolis yesterday and reviewed it with those guys. I'm happy with the way it's coming together right now. I'm pretty excited about the way they're looking at each individual building downtown and putting a redevelopment sort of plan together for it. The meeting with that group is February the 4th. I think Downtown Partnership has some stuff going on as early as 10 o'clock that day?
Nine o'clock, nine or 10.
Nine or 10 that day, and then Scott and Cecil and Sammy and Rose and those guys from SDG REA will be in at 1:00 to go over the plan. And then they'll take those last bits of input from that group and then get that out to you guys on February the 9th. It's their plan to have it in your inbox so you can review it. And then we'd like to have the public hearing on that that's required by the Office of Community and Rural Affairs as part of the process on February the 23rd. We'd like to do that here at 5:00 that night. That's before your meeting that night. So we'd like to be on your agenda for that night, but we'd like to have the public meeting for that, the hour before, if we could. Also...
What's, excuse me if I interrupt, what's SDGR?
Sorry, SDG.
SD, what is that?
Sorry, Strategic Development Group. And REA is Rundell Ernstberger Associates. And then Arc Trio is the third group that works, that was part of the choice, and that's Arc Trio. REA and Arc Trio are in, Rundell Ernstberger and Arc Trio are in Indianapolis. And Strategic Development Group is in Bloomington. SDG is, they are taking a closer look at the economics of the downtown and making suggestions from that standpoint. REA is looking more at architecture and housing, and then Arc Trio looking more at streetscape and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Also, state routes to school. I need to get back with Cosim to kind of get that wrapped up, but I think we have all of the feedback for that. Vicentino Nature Trust, we need to get funds from Department of Natural Resources to buy a couple parcels of ground along the rail line for Nickel Lake Trail Extension. We did close on the purchase of Ninth and Main, the corner there, last week. So with some private donations from First Federal Savings Bank and Rapid View IBOC, we were able to move forward with the purchase of that. The agreement was written up so that we can develop it either as a commercial space or a green space. So that's gonna fall into part of our downtown plan, and we'll be hearing more about that pretty soon. And then also, the meeting that called for the theater to be discussed is one of the projects for downtown is tomorrow night at the library at 6:00 PM. So the hope there is to identify a group of 10 to 15 or however many individuals that are actually willing to get in the trenches on that project. The owner, Ken Hoff, has said if there's a group that wants it to turn into a theater or a movie house or what have you, they can have it. So he's willing to basically donate the building to the community foundation that would then flip it to the organization that's going to manage the project. So hopefully tomorrow night, we'll get some folks in the community to say community theater or what have you will be a great project, and I'm willing to work on it. So that's tomorrow evening. This is kind of more of a Fedco project, but a few others, including Brian and John and Ron from the library joined Amy Beechy and Tiffany and I over in Goshen last week to look at their launch pad, which is a co-working space, which is one of the projects that we're considering for downtown that would enable entrepreneurs, designers, inventors, small businesses, professional nomads to share a working space that has a lot of benefits in terms of spinning ideas off each other. So that's another project that we're working on probably for downtown Rochester, but there might be some applications in other communities in the county as well. Unless there are other questions?
What would your timetable be for something like that?
You know, right now, I'm looking at a Ninth and Main project, possibly a Masonic project, a theater project. I was a judge for the JAG Business Plan Group from Region 4 last week in South Bend. The Rochester students and Tiffany Valley students did very well on that, as a matter of fact. They actually presented a business plan that wasn't too bad for a youth center, so I'm kind of working on a youth center project. So, you know, end of the week? 2016? Early 2017, 2016, early 2017 for all of the above?
That's good enough. 2017.
Anything else, Joe?
Well, thanks, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, BZA and Council on Aging, Marty?
Yep. BZA meeting was scheduled for tomorrow night. It has been canceled. Yesterday, we had a Council on Aging meeting, a full agenda. I'm gonna jump through this a little bit, but first things, I don't know that I've told this board, or not for sure, but Georgia Moody is the new executive director, Council on Aging. And Lori Pollack, bless her heart, has been helping get her acclimated to all the things that Lori was doing. So those two are getting on really well, and George is morphing into the position well. But the board itself needs two new members, so we're gonna be looking for a couple of people to serve on the board. From the Transpo side, they're going to hire a new driver. And they also had a, they lost all of their information from everything. Total loss of information in their computers. So they're looking at investing into a cloud-based system where they can have an automatic backup. Rusty's been reloading everything from that standpoint. From a building perspective, if you have not been down there, the flooring has completed, the painting has completed. The good news is that that grant that did that still has some money that has been saved in that process, and so they are looking to, you know, they've renovated in the kitchen as well. So they're looking at putting an awning over the service area, dress it up a little bit in that big room, and actually have a name of the Young at Heart Cafe that would be across the awning. They also think there's still gonna be some money left to look at some new entry doors into the restrooms from the exterior of the building. And I believe Warren has been down and looked at this. Evidently, there is a leak in the roof, and they're probably going to need a new roof on that building. So we're gonna be looking at getting a couple of quotes for that. It has leaked into the men's restroom. So that area was, the men's restroom was not painted until we get an idea of the roof leak. On a lighter note, new bingo cards have been purchased. And if you haven't been down there to call bingo, you don't know how serious of an issue that is. I've called bingo a couple of times, and some of them have their own favorite cards and have taken them home. Some have created their own cards and used those. And it has evidently gotten a little bit out of hand. So the council purchased new bingo cards, and they have to stay in the building, and we've had a little bit of a laugh about that. Training, Transpo had a CPR training last week. Everybody but one driver was there, so that is all done. And if anybody's interested, there is a goulash lunch at 11:30 on Friday. You are certainly welcome to go.
What a complete report. I gotta tell you, one of my worst experiences was calling bingo in an environment like that with the big board with all the numbers, and the power went out.
You've got some serious players there that will seriously harass a caller if they don't move it along fast enough. I love it. It's so much fun.
Thanks, Marty.
Yes, sir.
Okay, solid waste and animal adoption, Chase?
Yes, so a few things here. For the month of November 2015, County Linehamville received 16,735.04 tons of waste in 22 working days for an average of 760.68 tons per day. Fulton County accounted for 4,093.09 tons. The rest of Indiana contributed 12,641.95 tons. The host fee for the month was $19,986.19. And the other thing a little bit talked about was the curbside agreement with the city. They tabled until the next meeting until you could be there so I could talk about that.
Yeah, it's already, yeah. Off 6. Yeah. Or well, Roger Rose gave me.
The animal center. The new hire, Janet, finally started on the 12th, and so far, she's been doing a really good job with her duties. And we ended up buying her a new computer so she could take home and use for online things at Weather Center. And then we ended up paying for the software for, a web-based software for the animals' shelter to track and print receipts and those kinds of things for $310 a month. I think it's a year. $310 a year, I think is what it was. And that seemed to be a pretty good reasonable price, so that's what we went with. And then the building project, we ended up actually, Kathy had drew up some blueprints about with some new construction and had O and R looking at that. And they kind of priced it around $65,000 compared to what we were at. We were like $400,000, which is kind of overkill, so we kind of refigured that, and we're gonna go with maybe something like that. And get a contractor and see if we can, I think definitely we're gonna break ground this spring. Pretty good building. Ended up opening up a new account with just capital campaign funds at First Federal.
I appreciated getting their monthly report, but well, I mean, you know, it's not a very sophisticated report, but it tells everything. How many, how many animals do they hand down there, Chase? You got any idea?
Normally, they're pretty full, and I can't even remember what the max, yeah, the capacity is now.
Are we talking hundreds?
No, you're not, you're not that high. Not enough room yet. Once we get a new building, be able to do more.
Any questions for Chase? Okay, Tree Board and EMS, Tree Board's yet to meet. Water Board, John?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the Water Board's dead on January 4th. One of the main things that they had to get done immediately was the red light on top of the new water tower was out. They were sending Kent Denny, I think he's the only guy in the county, and they had to go up there to change it because there were no other volunteers to jump up there and do it, so bless his heart.
We've actually reversed the thinking on that. We're in another direction.
Okay, now we're on TV. Okay, and the next other important thing was that they released, they're finalizing the claim of the damaged generator that we'd had since, what, for the last six months? It has continued to work well, and that's also the new site. months. It has continued to work well, and that's also the new site. And so, they released that because they hadn't had any problems with it. They didn't want to release it until there could have been some other problems. You know, that goes, Mark. So, they, they did release that. Also, it was brought up that to get new generators for all three towers, put them on slabs, have the switch overs, the automatic switch overs, just in case we would have a catastrophe where something happened where power's down everywhere, whether we could keep those water towers going, and that was approved. It's not a major expense. We're asking for quotes. We'll have that at the next meeting. I'll be able to give that to you at the next council meeting. Bill Walsh, Walsh Electric, has been doing some valve work as usual, and also he should, I do believe by now, have all of the new lighting put in the building. And so, take, take opportunity and stop in and walk around. It's gonna look wonderful. And the transfer switches I mentioned, and it looks like that's about... they went over, of course, the delinquent list, and that's about all. Any, any questions?
Thanks, John. Okay, moving on on our agenda to unfinished open business, the redevelopment commission appointments. I have checked with everybody that's on the redevelopment commission, and everybody has signed up to serve again except for Evan Gutshaw, Terry. So, we have... that's a council appointment. So, you need to think about who, who would replace Evan. He, he, he really was mixed, torn, wanted to continue to serve because he enjoys it so much, but with his new, new job at, at the bank, felt he just didn't have the time.
Do you have anybody that you know is interested, do you, Terry?
I have somebody in mind, but I thought I would speak to the redevelopment commission about it. I'm not even sure they know about Evan yet, so I thought that on the February fourth date, next Thursday or Friday, whatever that is, I would roll it out, see if they have any thoughts about it. I have one person in mind that I think would be good, that has somewhat flexible schedule. But, I mean, it's a council appointment, so you guys have individuals that you think might serve and have the time to serve and have somewhat flexible schedule and are willing to get into some work, then please let me know if you could before the fourth would be appreciated.
And, and what, what time of the day do you meet again, Terry? It's...
It's, it's typically a Thursday, and it's typically eleven thirty for executive session if we need it, and then we usually go until, until at least two. So, it's two and a half hour meeting, three hour meeting nearly every time.
It's gonna have to be someone, folks, that can take a chunk out of their day like that.
And those meetings are not a regular schedule, but as needed, and they usually fall, come, come around every six weeks or so.
Okay, table until next meeting? That way you can talk to them, too. Okay. Okay, that brings us to our new business. We have some members of the Community Action Committee here regarding the pseudo-fed issue in the community. Mark, would you like to take the floor, or Val? Which, which one of you is taking the floor?
I have a few words.
Please, please identify yourself for the group, if you would.
I'm Val Pemberton. I'm representing the Citizen Action Committee tonight. Mr. Mayor and Councilman Rochester and Fulton County have a major meth lab problem. In the last two and a half years, nearly a hundred meth labs have been found, reportedly found in Rochester and Fulton County, and I'm sure the figure is much higher than that. We have eighty homes that houses in Rochester and Fulton County that have been contaminated by meth and are off the tax rolls. Each day, the Rochester City Police Force, the Sheriff's Department, and the clean team seek out and, and arrest these meth lab criminals. Yet a few blocks down the street, some of our pharmacists daily sell pseudo-fed to meth lab spurs, which is then used that same day probably and creating more meth. This situation has gone on for years, and in our opinion, is close to insanity. It should not be allowed to continue. We'd like to see this irresponsible practice stopped. For that reason, we're requesting the city of Rochester to establish an ordinance to regulate the sales of PSC by pharmacies in Rochester. The purpose of that ordinance is to eliminate meth labs in Rochester and Fulton County. We have a majority of our committee here tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. Sheriff Sailors, I'd be really, really anxious to hear what you might have to say. I think you could share some thoughts with the group.
Sure. Sheriff Chris Sailors, Fulton County Sheriff. Back, probably been about a year ago, Val approached me considering being on this committee and several civic-minded individuals in Fulton County and Rochester area. I said that would be great. Biggest part was trying to educate folks about the meth problem. As Chief Schatz, for several years, worked drugs, he can tell you, it's, it's, you know, we... back in the eighties when Ronald Reagan, Nancy Reagan, you know, it was a war on drugs, that's all we heard. And it's been a continual war. When I was running for sheriff, that was one of my primary concerns, because Indiana for the... at that time, for the last two years ranked number one in the United States for meth lab. And guess what? This year, we're number one again. Actually, the labs went up, we're at fifteen hundred and thirty, I believe, is what they said yesterday. Anyway, it's, it's been a concern, and not to delve on that, I think you're all aware of that. But what really kind of brought things to light, and, and it's kind of a perfect storm, I guess, what we're looking at with the committee. The county and the city partnered up with Miami County and Peru City and the state police, started the clean team, which you've heard about. And I, I can't say enough about their efforts. They've done a tremendous job. So, we've, we've gotten some proactive law enforcement, started something that we hadn't been able to do, because each one of us don't have the manpower to dedicate those folks to that. But with, with the team that was started, we've got a bit of eleven different agencies involved and some more manpower, and, and that's happened. But, but the real thing that caught my attention, it was a publication put out by Purdue University. Wonder if you're a Purdue riding you fan. I'm not gonna start that argument. Purdue put this...
I love you, bud.
It was entitled Methamphetamine Use in Rural Indiana. And what surprised me, I knew it was bad, but Fulton County ranked third in the state for small counties based on population for the average seizure rate of meth labs. And I'm sitting there going, I knew it was bad, but I didn't know it was that bad. So, that, that kind of caught our, our attention. And then you look at the, the, what's... the people that are incarcerated by jail, and I, I don't have the two thousand fifteen statistics yet, so I apologize, but thirty-five percent of the people incarcerated by jail are on meth, methamphetamine-related charges.
Thirty-five percent?
Thirty-five percent. So, you know, that kind of opened your eyes and said, wow, this, this is a problem. I'll take it a step further, and when we have a meth lab, a lot of times, we have children in the homes. And so, I talked to Judge Lee, and I'll apologize, he sent me this graph. He kind of was kidding me, because the last two weeks, we've been down to State House, and I haven't shown it to the senators or the representatives, but two thousand fifteen, we had a hundred and six CHINs cases in Fulton County. That's child, children in need of services, okay? From two thousand to two thousand nine, we averaged probably right at about twenty CHINs cases. From two thousand ten to two thousand fifteen, that jumped, that number jumped up to an average of around eighty-one, okay? So, I asked the judge, I said, how, how is that related to the methamphetamine use? His comment was eighty percent. Eighty percent of those cases, I could point back directly to manufacturing meth, okay? When we were down last week at the Senate testifying before the corrections and whatever committee, yeah. Senator Steele brought that point up as well. He's from Lawrence County Bedford area, and they had two hundred, they're about double the size we are as county, population-wise. They had over two hundred and thirty cases, I believe, CHINs cases, and he said the same thing, eighty percent are tied to meth, to the manufacturing of meth, okay? So, the state police threw a figure out at one of these meetings that said from start to finish, from the time that you investigate the case, the incarceration, the adjudication, and then if you have the children involved, which I think this last year, they figured there were three hundred and eighty-three kids, was a figure they threw out yesterday, that they can tie back to this year with, with meth cases that were injured and that sort of thing as a direct result of the manufacturing process. With wraparound services, with DCS and all the other state services and so forth, they can certainly estimate each one of those cases is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money, okay? That's the cleanup, everything, okay? You put those numbers here in Fulton County, and again, I kind of use some simple math, but we averaged twenty cases on average, eighty percent the last five years, that gets you around sixty-three roughly cases that we could identify as meth-related through the manufacturing and production, okay? Sir, John?
I have two things I was saying eighteen million out loud.
Yeah, about fifteen point seven million dollars just here in Fulton County, and we're a small county. You take that times ninety-two counties in the state of Indiana, you're in billions, friends. I'm, I'm here to tell you, it's a serious problem. We have taken some steps here locally with the passage of you folks last July with the ordinance, or I mean, the resolution that you passed, and now we're asking for this, this resolution. We were fortunate enough, Mark Williamson and myself, and, and Harry Webb went down last week, was asked to testify before a Senate committee hearing. There was a bill proposed by Senator Hitt, Councilman Fishwater was also in attendance, Senate Bill eighty, as of yesterday, I believe. It's made it through the House second reading. There were some technical things they're trying to fix, but it sounds like it's moving ahead. Matter of fact, just before I came up here, I was reading an article that was published. Senator Steele down there, who was one of them in the committee, has, has come forward and backing this, this bill wholeheartedly. Yesterday, we went down and spoke to the House for the Health Committee, I believe it was, very, very brief. But one of the things that, that kind of come out of that, there were three bills that the House is looking at, and one is the, basically to continue the reporting process, which is already more or less in place. But the next part of that is, help me, Mark Stoltz, representative, presented the bill.
Oh, Ben Smalls of Auburn.
Ben Smalls from Auburn. And his bill kind of mirrors what Senator Hitt's is. And then you had another one that basically was kind of putting some limitations on the fentanyl and, and which I don't necessarily see how that can be done from that standpoint. But I could see all three of those bills probably ended up being some merge and coming out of the House at this point. So, there's... we, we've actually, believe it or not, from being down at State House, we're hearing good things, and it's because of our efforts here in Fulton County. Matter of fact, it was cited in paper tonight that the Senator Steele said, you know, it's, it's worked here in Fulton County. We've seen actually a fifty percent reduction in fentanyl sales by the volunteer efforts of the pharmacists here doing what they're doing. And I know I talked to, there were three prosecutors there yesterday as well that testified, and Fulton County's on the map, folks. Everybody's looking to see what we're gonna do. And I guess this is why I'm passionate about it, why Val, Bob, and Mark, and the other members, Terry especially, I mean, Terry's the one that's dug into this. But I know all eyes are on us to see what we're gonna do here, and I think by passing of this ordinance, and I believe the count, the commissioners are actually, next meeting next week, are looking at the same ordinance, we get something passed, sends a clear message down to State House, we're serious about what we're doing here. And, you know, it's, it's a simple process. Harry probably could explain a lot better than me as a way of doing that, but, but it is. It's a very simple process. It's, it's not denying people of their ability to buy the decongestant, but it, it puts the front line, the pharmacist is on the front line. And Representative McNamara yesterday, when she presented her bill, probably summed it up the best. Law enforcement has been fighting this for years, Andy can attest to that. We're always in a reactive position. It's always active effect. And we need to have someone on the front lines to be the, the gatekeeper, so to speak. And the pharmacist is the ones that can do that, and it's something they do all the time anyway. It's nothing, we're not asking them to do anything or anything different than what they would do or what they should be doing. A consultation with, with the person coming in to get that medication. It's just a few simple questions, and then they can make their professional determination. So, we feel it's a good thing. Again, it's gaining momentum. Like I said, within the last couple of days, I've seen a flurry of articles on the, in the news, that what we're doing is making an impact. And, and, you know, is it gonna stop the addiction of meth? No, it's not. You know, that's, that's a whole nother issue, another battle. But will it stop the, the local homegrown manufacturing? Yes, it's gonna make a dent in a, a big dent. And that's gonna save the taxpayers, you know, like Val pointed out, the, the property values, the other costs associated with this. And a lot of people don't understand that, you know. Yeah, I pay the tax, but it's the hidden, the hidden cost that you don't really see with, with this situation. So, I've taken enough time. I appreciate you allowing me to have a few comments, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, Terry.
Do you have any questions? If there's any questions, just one.
Anybody question for the sheriff? Thank you, Sheriff. Andy, anything to add to that, to the two shots?
I, I can't say enough about what these people have done. They've done a great job, and I think we should do everything in our power to stop it. I read somewhere, meth users, meth addicts, true meth addicts, sixty to seventy percent of them will abuse their kids in one way or, or another, whether it be physical, mental, or sexual. And I think we should do everything we can to protect those kids. So, what, whatever, whether it be a pass an ordinance or whatever the case may be, we need to do whatever we can to get this stopped.
As most of you know, I've been spending a lot of time with our police department, and Officer Ostrom, who's had a lot of drug experience, mentioned to me that most people don't realize that meth, if you try it one time, you're hooked for life.
You can be, yeah. Obviously, depends on the person and the bi... their biography and their, their chemical makeup and the point of life they're in, and if they've got a history of substance abuse. Yeah, absolutely.
It's very, very addictive, extremely so, yeah. Anybody have any other comments to be made on this subject?
I don't know if you want.
No, sure, sure.
Some of you know, maybe, maybe most of you know, I'm on that committee as well, and I, I know a lot's been said already. I won't take a lot of time, but, you know, the committee came to you, to the council back in July and asked for the resolution. At that point in time, Andy raised some concerns about the council getting into passing an ordinance based on subjecting the city maybe to some litig... ordinance based on, uh, subjecting the city maybe to some litigation down the road. The, the committee was grateful that the council passed the resolution. And since that time, we've been working with the county council and had an ordinance in front of them, which they tell us quite openly that they're very much supportive of. And there has been an ordinance in front of them that was partly authored by our prosecutor, Rick Brown. And that's what I handed out to you tonight. This has been the ordinance that the county commissioners have been looking at. And it has been Val's dream all along that Fulton County could take the lead in this and create a program and a blueprint, very simple to follow, that could be presented to surrounding counties of Fulton. And we could really start to see some progress, not just for Fulton County, but for the entire state. And Sheriff Saylor's mentioned that fifteen hundred and thirty labs, I, I have those numbers. And if you take Fulton County and the, and the six other counties around us, we're eight percent of the counties in, in the state of Indiana, and we have fourteen percent of the meth labs. If you take Delaware County out, which is by far the worst county in Indiana, they have two hundred and thirty-four in the, in the year of two thousand and fifteen compared to our thirteen. That percentage goes way up if you just take that one, uh, free county number out of there. But basically, what the county commissioners have now come back to us and said, we really, we support it, we wanna pass it, but we really think that the county and the city of Rochester, maybe the town of Akron, although not too critical because that is Webb's pharmacy over there, and they already do this. Uh, but that they would, the county would like the city and the county to pass the same ordinance. So, I don't know if you've had a chance to meet with Greg.
I have, I have.
Okay. And, and you're working on the parts of the ordinance that maybe are problematical to you at least a little bit?
Yeah, I, I might just give a little background for the new council members as to, to what I raised last summer. It basically comes down to the novelty, or what I perceive to be a novelty, of a municipality making a regulation of this type in, in this industry. My concern was based on the idea that, that probably the best way to understand it is, is imagine if your job is to train three hundred pharmacists a year. And in the state of Indiana, you have one set of regulations, they're state regulations. Now imagine if every town and city and county decides to do their own regulation. That would make your job more difficult. Would it make your job difficult enough that your company would attempt to mount a challenge to that, say, "Listen, the state of Indiana has occupied the field when it comes to regulating this industry, you can't enter into that." And that's the novelty that gave me some concern. I won't say that concern is zero, but I'm gonna add a couple things to that. One is, uh, we haven't, since passing the, uh, resolution, I've not received any feedback from that prototypical person saying, "I hope, you know, I hope you don't go any farther with this," or anything like that. I don't know if anyone has received a negative word along, among those lines. Second, when I talk with county attorney, I think you will see the, the final version will change section seven in the proposed, that's the penalty section. And if we change the penalty section from a shall fine between this dollar and this dollar range to a may fine, and leave the dollar range basically either a site to the general penalty section, uh, which allows to fine as little as a dollar, I think that would change the focus of a proposed ordinance from the numerical fine to the policy statement. And I think that's probably what's, what's intended in this. And so I think it, it still has teeth because it's an ordinance, but we're not causing an immediate, uh, financial threat, uh, and we, we kind of downplay the, the penalty form of that. It's still an ordinance, it's still penalized, it can still be fined. But if we change section seven, and, and county attorney, uh, expected he would do that, uh, for the, for the mission, we change section seven to a, a may fine and leave, leave the fine range generic, I, I think my, my concerns, you can, you know, not entirely alleviated, I have, I have the job of issuing warnings and caution, but.
Sure.
But certainly my concerns would diminish a bit if, if we were to make those changes before passing them.
To address your point, and my experience is limited with something where we're reaching out here into a world of statutory enforcement. Two, eight years ago, when we had some folks come to the council and want an ordinance, some of you may remember this, on drag and golf carts on our streets, and everywhere in the state was saying, "Now, we'll find you out, we'll ticket you," when half a dozen of more cities around us passed ordinances against the state ruling. This is a much graver situation, and it involves people that would receive the statutory penalty, who, they haven't contacted you as a result of the resolution. What they're actually saying, if I get this right, is, "Give us a tool for us to work with, so we can tell the, the smurf or the customer, we're under ordinance to operate task due to these questions." So, I believe that it, what, what we're looking for at this stage of the game is some leadership. Somebody needs to step up and make this work. I talked with Randy Head Saturday at the legislative breakfast. It looks pretty good, but there are lobbyists working hard against it from the pill manufacturers, the drug companies. And even if it goes through, it's gonna be sometime in two thousand and seventeen before it becomes the law of the state. So, you know, we have a lot of meth labs manufacturing meth, maybe now in two thousand and seventeen. My opinion, folks, is we need to give our local folks some tools to do, to deal with this. It's just, that's my opinion.
Can I speak for a second? I'm not, if I'm allowed.
Sure, sure.
I guess, you know, just.
Amy, would you identify yourself?
Yes, Amy Rowe, Fulton County Chamber of Commerce. Just looking at it from an economic development piece, so I know this is completely off, but, you know, one of the things for me when I moved back here, and I rarely cry, but I, I remember, because I swear my neighbors, I think that they sold meth or heroin, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but that's why I asked sweet little Harry about to put off on the front and the back just in case, but, just to be safe. But the thing that struck me the most is when I left Fulton County and when I came back, I felt like it was a different place. And the thing that struck me the most is the realization that a lot of folks lacked hope. And I think that lack of hope actually directed them to do things such as drugs. And I, and I felt just so overcome with the youth that I thought were misdirected that were doing these drugs. And from an economic development perspective, we're working so diligently to help encourage them to be entrepreneurs and to be encouraged and to move into a career here in Fulton County. And if there is something such as this, and I know that there's so many liability issues, and it, and it's something that if we choose to do this, that potentially we could have issues on a, a larger level, but could we not potentially be the ones that are the, the trailblazers, right? So sometimes you have to sacrifice on the front end to benefit on the back end, and we have some great folks who are willing to do that. But all of this said, I just feel like the youth, that if we're looking at youth, I spoke yesterday at the Optimist Club about youth, if we're looking at providing them an opportunity, we need to protect them from folks that maybe would desire to harm them. We don't, if we can keep them from potentially being drawn into something that would keep, you know, if they're right about the, you know, addictive nature related to this drug, if somebody's just accidentally trying it, that person's lost forever, they're on the system. They're not an entrepreneur, they're not starting a new business, they're not building Fulton County, they're not building Rochester, they're not moving us forward. And so I feel like, and obviously there's legal, you know, I understand that, but if we're given an opportunity to make a stand about something, if we can all legally make this happen, I feel like we need to, just for the, for the platform of encouraging the youth, people who are having children in Fulton County.
Thanks, Amy. Question for you. Have you had anyone from outside Fulton County contact you to get a copy of the resolution or the ordinance that's been passed?
I have not, no.
Well, that's interesting, because I was in the mayor's meeting this last week, and several of the mayors around us knew about this, they're watching it closely.
I, no, I take that back. Someone contacted my office, I didn't see the other person, I think, I want to say someone from Marshall County.
I, yeah, I know.
Hasn't Marshall County.
Their prosecutor has been watching closely what, what we're doing. I think he's waiting on.
Well, Mayor Mark up there's watching too. Yeah. And I, and I truly, I truly believe what Amy said, you know, they're looking for somebody to step up, and there will be others behind us. Anyway.
Well, I guess what, as councilman, what I'd like to see is it can, I can't act on the ordinance because we don't have one written in front of us with that language, but if, if we get this, if Andy, uh, council is happy with that, you, I think you'll all see that paragraph seven, may instead of shall. If you have a chance to read this, are you, the commissioners have a meeting again Monday morning at nine o'clock, I believe, and we'll probably try to all be there. But is there support on the city council to?
Most definitely.
To pass an ordinance?
Most definitely.
Yeah, I feel like whenever we can get a workable version of this ordinance, even if it's before our regularly scheduled meeting, we should have a special meeting because I think this is an opportunity.
Really important.
And honestly, this is my ninth year on the council, and this will be the most impactful thing that we'll be able to do.
I, I agree with that. That's not a, that's not a light statement at all, I think you're right on.
And, you know, I think sooner rather than later.
Mason, haven't heard anything out of you, so.
I had nothing to report, you took over to the park meeting, so.
Well, you weren't there!
How about this issue? I, I think, you know, if we can get one drawn up, and we act as soon as we can.
Could I add something?
Forty-eight dollars notice.
Forty-eight dollars?
My name's Mark Wavison, I'm with Drug Free Fulton County, I've been working in substance abuse for about fifteen years now, so. Been fortunate enough to be able to work with this group of fine folks, and definitely want to commend Harry. He has just been the engine behind this thing, and has been all the enthusiasm behind it. I just wanted to add two points. One to what Councilman Smith was saying. By us, by Harry's policy and being implemented in Fulton County voluntarily by the pharmacist, the four chains plus his two, of course, since June, we've reduced the pseudoephedrine sales by fifty percent. And what that equates to as far as lab seizures is, is we went down fifty-two percent. We had like twenty-seven, I believe it was in two thousand and fourteen, and thirteen lab seizures this past year, fifteen. When you look around us, the adjacent counties, as Councilman Smith mentioned, we had one other county that went down, they went down by eleven percent. We had five other counties adjacent to us that went up, one as much as thirty-six percent. And, and Casillasco stayed even at fifty-two labs each year, fourteen and fifteen. So, as it, as it is, is the, the law that the state is looking at is modeled after a law passed in Arkansas, and that's what we modeled this thing after here in Fulton County. So it, it, it works, it definitely works. I just wanted to add that to the, the stats.
I guess, I've got one question.
Okay.
The, how about the alternative drug, was it Nexofed?
Yes.
Have, have the local pharmacies seen an increase in, because I would think the natural thing would be if I can't get pseudoephedrine, I would, if I do have an issue, I'd buy the Nexofed. And have they seen an increase in, in those sales?
I can't really answer that because it's not, it's not something that's attainable, except from the, the chains.
Nobody monitors that sale.
But, but the policy is, you know, basically, someone that needs the product is not going to be refused it, because the, the, they could, if, if the pharmacist can't determine as a legitimate need, then, as you mentioned, Nexofed or Zefrex, those are meth deterrent products, are available, and they have the pseudoephedrine product in it. It's just that when it's, when it may be used for cooking nut, it diverts to this gooey substance that, that is unusable to, to convert into meth. And that, and that's what, basically, those two bills that are down at the State House now, Senator Head and Representative Smalls, that's kind of what those bills say, making those determinations and the processes for a pharmacist to legitimize the need for a customer. The second point I wanted to make was, um, in speaking to our prosecutor, Rick Brown, about the ordinance, um, I kind of questioned some of the things when it first came out in my mind, and he came back and he said, "I look at this, I was kind of questioning how much, how much teeth were in the, the thing." And he said, or consequence, maybe that's a better way to put it. And he says, "It's, it's a tool that the pharmacist can use for their corporate policy." Because what we found when we started talking to the local pharmacists, they recognized the problem, they were willing to do something about it, but in some cases, they're restricted by their corporate policy. So this will give them a tool, it's like, "Look, this is what our county is saying." So I would just, I hope that the consequence would be severe enough so that they can't just say, "Well, if it's only a dollar, we'll just pay it up for you." So.
Well, Mark, if you can interject, what we're talking about is corporate responsibility, because there's only one reason corporate policy would not be behind this, and that's sales. And if we make that known, add attention, I don't think corporations are gonna want to be labeled like that.
Well, the, you know, the primary opponent to the, the bills down in the State House is the Consumer Health and Products Association. They've been advertising on the radio since, for about two months now, so. They're the representatives of pill manufacturers. Thank you for your time.
I'd just like to touch upon one issue that has elaborated and discussed, but, uh, those of us on the committee are very proud of what Val and, and our pharmacist has done in leading the way on this and developing this program. It's, it's getting a lot of positive publicity in the surrounding counties and throughout the state, and law enforcement agencies are speaking positively about it. You were at the meeting Saturday morning, Chad, when all four legislators were there, and they were of the same mind that what seemed like a simple solution is to require a prescription for pseudoephedrine. Two or three states have done so, and it's been rather effective. But you have rather two strange parties coming to oppose that. And one is those that manufacture pseudoephedrine, that you can make methamphetamine out of it. And the second group is looking at it from the medical standpoint, that if you make pseudoephedrine a prescription drug, uh, the, it's gonna get into Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement, get into a lot of medical problems that you don't have in over-the-county drugs. And so you've got those two groups that are probably, their thoughts, honest or dishonest, are gonna oppose any form of making pseudoephedrine a prescription drug. And we of the committee, and with support that's received on this throughout the state, think this is the best solution, and better than anything else that's been presented in the legislature. And our representatives are very supportive of it, and we think it would be just a great step to move forward and provide the leadership on this.
Thank you, Senator Bob Dickerson. Thank you.
Everybody that was here from the committee has spoken.
Spoken.
Thanks for being here, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right on, legal department, we have nothing under that unless you've got something.
Just two very quick things. I think you'll have the handout from the public information officer, that's a good handle, they put it on line, I don't know that I've ever seen it as a print version, but let me give you a very quick Reader's Digest version of the open door law. If there are four of you together, better not be discussing city business, okay? And in an executive session, you have to stick to discussing what is in the notice and nothing else. It's going to be very hard for you to violate the open door law during those two things. Secondly, one area that I think eventually the public access counselor will have to decide, and it's an advisory type of thoughts and opinions on it, it has to do with emails. Whether emails, particularly the tendency people have to hit reply all, can eventually form a discussion. And if that email discussion can eventually be considered meeting, I believe I'm the current version of statute. Current version of statute, it's possible that someday there's going to be a decision that says, hey, you guys started an email conversation, you spent the better part of the day discussing substance of city management issues, and that's a meeting. And so you will get emails, as you get emails from Shada, if you're going to respond, ask yourself before you hit reply all if that's necessary, because if you reply to Shada, that's not a meeting, okay? And so, and if you do have to reply all, don't make it anything substantive, keep it to, I can't be at this meeting, something like that. So just keep that in mind. The other thing, there was a case that came out of the city of Carmel a couple of weeks ago, having to do with someone who appealed one of their speeding tickets in the city, and that resulted, to I'm sure Carmel's surprise, to the Court of Appeals suggesting that their entire ordinance was incorrectly passed. I looked at that decision, I looked at our speeding ordinances, I do not believe ours makes the mistake that theirs made, I'll put it simply. And so I don't think we're in danger of that. That's on, it might be appealed in reverse, so, but if you hear that, I think Pat Roberts down Peru was quoted as saying that they've got a problem with theirs. I've looked at ours, I don't think we have that problem, just in case you're wondering if you saw that headline, but that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Eighty-eight concerns? No? Okay, and the budget transfer resolution, number 01-2016? Got a copy of that?
Do you want me to explain it?
Would you please, Chad?
At the end of the year, as I was going through, making sure that we, all our accounts were in order, oddly enough, this was one of them, that in the budget process, we did not appropriate enough funds for our pension fund, our old police pension fund, which is funded by the state, essentially, it's not money actually, it comes out of our coffers, we get money from the state, we still have to put in appropriation in the budget, and I, we undershot it by $735. So, we did not have any death benefits to pay out of our old police pension fund, so I'm just asking that we transfer that $735 from the death benefit account line item to pensions to retired patrolmen to cover that shortfall in that account line item.
Okay, I entertain a motion on resolution.
Do we need somebody to read it into the record?
Yeah, they have somebody to read it. Martin?
Sure, okay. I'll open my mouth and next.
Absolutely.
You know, that goes back to third grade.
Yeah, well, I'd make a motion that we have the first reading of resolution 1-2016 in its entirety.
Got a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Favor. Okay, Martin?
Resolution 01-2016, whereas the accounts herein named by reason of unforeseen expenses at the time the regular budget was adopted are insufficient for the needs of such accounts for the balance of 2015. And as an emergency now exists, for additional funds, such emergency is hereby expressly found and declared. Section one, there is hereby transferred the following amounts to the following accounts. Old Police Pension Fund, 3040000, from 415040, death benefits, $735, to 451010, pensions to retired patrolmen, $735.
Okay, I have a motion on 01-2016?
Make a motion for the adoption of resolution 1-2016?
Second.
Those in favor? Need another, can we waive the second reading, or we have to go through the second reading?
It's a resolution.
Okay. I had 02-2016.
We have two. There's one.
Ah, okay. All right, we have resolution 02-2016, Chad, it's my, just play that one.
This one, last year, through the course of the year, we had discussed making sure that we got some rainy day money transferred, and I did not get that into the December council packet, so that's what this is for, is getting that $300,000 that we had talked about last year transferred from general over to the rainy day fund. We did pay off, for the new council members, we did pay off some debt last year, so the city, right now, the only debt that the city has is our water revenue bond. All other city obligation bonds, anything that is taxpayer supported, is paid off in full, three years early. So we saved a little bit on interest on that, and so we're just putting that payoff back into the rainy day fund. This should take our, I should have, I should have double-checked the balance before I came in this evening, but I didn't, but I believe this will take us up to a million-dollar balance in the rainy day fund. So, or right at that amount, maybe a little bit more.
And we're okay to address this even though it wasn't on the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Motion, resolution 02-2016?
Make a motion to read resolution 02-2016 in its entirety.
Martin? Second? Second, got a second?
I'll second.
Motion.
I would have read the first one.
You would have read the first one?
You missed doing the part.
Oh, yeah.
You do it so well.
Oh, yeah. Resolution 2-2016, a resolution to transfer funds from the general fund to the rainy day fund, whereas the city of Rochester desires to transfer funds from the general fund to the rainy day fund, and whereas an ordinance was passed by the common council in 2001 establishing a rainy day fund pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-8-5.1, and whereas there is money in the general fund to transfer to the rainy day fund, and whereas $300,000 is needed to be transferred from the general fund to the rainy day fund. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Rochester, Indiana, that $300,000 be transferred from the general fund to the rainy day fund.
Motion on resolution 02, I went 02.
I'd make a motion for the adoption of resolution 02-2016.
Second.
Second, I'm Marty, those in favor? Okay.
I, well, I don't know if we have another...
Visitors? Any comments from our visitors here tonight? We welcome you for being here, it's nice to have some visitors. Thank you, folks, for coming and making your presentation. I want to make one thing clear before I ask for a motion to adjourn, it was not right that we would like to have the ordinance come back with the wording changed.